Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting, the special board meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education, to order. Ms. Bowie, if you could please call the roll.
Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Boyer. Judy Justice.
Here.
Stephanie Craybill.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
And Pete Wildebohr.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. Is there a second?
There.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, I would like to welcome Ms. Barnum to the microphone, please, and we will begin our training.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so you have a packet in front of you that will guide us through our student appeal hearing process.
Blue or yellow.
Not the blue, the manila. Yes, the not blue.
The not blue.
Mm-hmm, the not blue. So we have a schedule today of eight hearings. One of those is going to involve siblings, so multiple students, but I do want to give a giant shout out to my partner in crime, Denise Angevane. We have gone through many, 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 many of these and looked for any way to be supportive of the parent's request by being quite forensic in this process, looking for any type of hardship or unique opportunity that can only be remedied by moving to the requested school. And so we want to walk through the process with you to make sure that you have all the information that we have and make sure this day is going to be pretty clear for us, but it's going to be much shorter than most days for appeal hearings. So, thank you, Denise. Thank you, thank you. Denise and I spend hours and hours and hours together, and toward enrollment season, it's more and more hours. But as I like to tell people, and I'm going to tell it again, my first year teaching, Denise was one of the faces that I saw that was going to guide me and make sure that I knew what I was supposed to be doing. She was the, well, she was everything, data manager, treasurer, all that at Bellamy Elementary my first year teaching. And I walked in not knowing what I was doing, and Denise was like, "We got you, it's all good." So, I love that at this point in my career, I still get to receive guidance from Denise.
Same.
Okay, so you have a student assignment appeals 2122 document. So we're going to spend a little time on this first. This orientation is going to allow us the review time of policies 2500, 4150, and 4152. These are policies that you have seen really recently, since we are spending also a lot of valuable time in our policy manual. And so I'm not going to go too much into detail with these, other than to bring your attention to a few pieces in each of them. And you have the policies in your packet, if you want to refer to those. Otherwise, I'm just going to bring up a couple of points. In policy 2500, hearings before the board, the part here that I think is important for you to know, the superintendent, and of course, we know that means a designee, shall provide a copy of this policy, which you do have it, and specify time limitations on the oral presentation. So we will do that. There will, there are time limits that we'll cover as a part of this orientation. And on the back, I also want to bring your attention to number eight. In reviewing any appeal of a decision of school personnel, so you would be, you're going to be looking at appeals of decisions that I have been making as the designee of the superintendent. The board will determine whether the administrative record as a whole provides sufficient evidence to justify the decision of the superintendent or designee. New evidence will not be permitted unless necessary to prevent a threat of substantial unfairness. So I do want to bring your attention to the fact that we're bringing you every piece of information that was provided to us by the parent. Very often in appeal hearings, we get new information. So you may get new information and you can, you know, you see how this says, "New evidence is not permitted unless necessary to prevent a threat of substantial unfairness." Okay?
Does that mean, who decides if it's to prevent a substantial, is that you, or do we call you in, or we decide that?
I can certainly participate in your conversation, but that is your decision.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good question. All right, so policy 4150, school assignment. You annually have a presentation of the student assignment plan, so that's already been done. Generally, that's something that happens around January, early February, generally, January at the latest, though. So you have, that's already completed. And then we're following, according to B, the last part of section B on 4150, only as provided in the student assignment plan. So we have, and you have a copy of that, so I'm going to take you through the student assignment plan, so that you'll have a place to quick reference as you need to through the appeals. In the request for reassignment, I'm moving on through 4150, section C, the request must specify the reason why reassignment is sought. We have had some that don't specify a reason, other than, you know, parental request, that we need a reason. So we do, there's a lot of communication that goes on from our office to the parent to seek out any information on that. Moving on down under C, at the hearing, the board will consider and make a determination based upon the best interest of the child, the orderly and efficient administration of the public schools, the proper administration of the school to which reassignment is requested, and the instruction, health, and safety of the pupils that are involved or enrolled. So you, you don't just make the decision on what's in the best interest of this child, you have to also consider the orderly and efficient administration of the schools, the proper administration of the school in which the reassignment is being sought, and then overall instruction, health, and safety. So that's where we look at capacities and the determination of, you know, where the capacities are over. And then I will tell you that many of these, many that you are not having to see today, there was a request for a school that was less overcrowded than the, than the school they were assigned in, and we've covered all of those. So those have already been approved.
Well, it's automatic.
Well, through our process, it became, it became automatic. So you're not hearing appeals for those. So you are not hearing appeals for anyone trying to go to a less crowded school. Okay? Just want to clarify that. And, let's see, that's the only thing I want to really mention on, for that policy. The next one, policy 4152, this does not apply to us because we do not have any schools that are identified as persistently dangerous, but I want to bring to your attention that very fact. We don't have any that are identified as persistently dangerous due to violent criminal offenses. So the second sentence in this policy, I think, is really important. The board believes that in most cases, a student should attend the school that serves his or her domicile. And this policy outlines, well, what if it's an unsafe place to be? We don't have any that fall in that category. There might be an objective, personal determination of schools, but we do not have any that fall into that category. Okay. So, the next thing I want to take your attention to is the student assignment plan 202122, and it supports policies 2500, 4150, and 4152. This is your thicker document. It's number four. Document four at the bottom. So of course, we are focused on general statute, 115C 366, where a student shall be assigned to a school by the Board of Education in accordance with the student's domicile. And then as we go further, unless there is information regarding homelessness, residing in a group home, foster home, or pre-adoptive home, you won't have any of those either. Those have already been determined and approved. So you are following 115C 366 and the student assignment plan adopted by the board. I want to take your attention to the bottom. After completing a comprehensive redistricting plan in December 2019, there you see three bullets. We move through the lottery process, that has all been completed per the student assignment plan. And some of the students that we are still working through are those that have received a waitlist, or they're in the wait pool for a lottery, but then looking for transfer for other reasons. The second page, right there at the top, Roman numeral one, school attendance areas and transportation zones. In December 2019, this redistricting process, the Board of Education of New Hanover County Schools established geographic boundaries called school attendance areas, and that's what we have followed for school assignment, of course. We have waitpool information on page four, letting us know how long we maintain a waitpool. Four waitpools in our lottery exist from the time of lottery until Christmas break. Four magnet schools. For non-magnet and year-round schools, so every other besides magnet, they only exist till the first day of school, and we clean out. So if there are any spots available on the first day of school, we run that again and randomly determine those students to go into those seats. If a seat in a magnet or a non-magnet school, or a year-round becomes available, they're randomly drawn, and that, drawn and that parent is communicated. And if they accept the seat, then we go. And if they don't accept the seat, we keep moving. So we look to fill every open spot for those schools that are sought after.
Julie, back on the last section, when you talk about attendance zones and transportation zones, oh, oops.
Are we going to hear any cases where somebody is just requesting transportation that we may provide or may not provide?
Generally, no. I can't, I can't think of.
I don't think we can.
Yeah, generally, no. We have run through so many, but that, that's one of those, if there is an extenuating circumstance, especially involving some type of, if it's been verified bullying or harassment, or they've been the victim of some type of criminal offense, then we work through those and we wouldn't bring those to you as an appeal.
Okay.
We would, we would not bring the parent to you to appeal the decision.
Julie, just curiosity, how many people apply? What's the total number?
So this year, we resolved 46 before we got here, but we resolved some of them before we even got into. So any, do you want to give a number?
We have a number that I need to even say. We have 666 open choice applications, which is down about 150 from last year. I believe it was up last year to a redistricting.
Mm-hmm, it was.
So we have 666 open choice applications. But in a year, a school year, we will go through around 3,500 different types of applications, or say, of a school year.
But of those, we can tell you, so, I've got that information. So of those 666, some of those are easy to determine. So four, five of those had sibling privilege. So we moved through all of those and approved. 16 had either fifth grade, eighth grade, or senior privilege. We moved through those. A valid contract where they're moving into another area, if that's within 180 days, then yes, we're doing that. Signature program for a high school, we had 79 of those that we were able to move through. So in general, and then, so that meant we had 304 that were approved and 362 that were denied. 46 came in for appeals that we went ahead and approved through hardship. So anytime their appeal came in and it provided any more information that I found as a hardship, or otherwise, they, they gave us more information, and we're like, "Wait, that's a fifth grade privilege." Even when they don't, when a parent might not put all that information on there, we, that's why I say we're forensic. Okay, wait, this kid is a fifth grader. Where were they in third and fourth grade? If we know that they were in that school, we don't, we don't require the parent to say, "This is fifth grade privilege." We find it. So we look for all of the possible acceptance reasons and then move through them. And I think that might be something that's a little bit different from times in the past. Yeah.
Definitely.
Thank you for that question. Okay, so, yeah, so like I mentioned a little earlier, you're not going to have the easy I couldn't, I couldn't find a way to move through. So, let me see if there's, back to the student assignment plan, you've got your definitions of, beginning at the bottom of page five, from assigned school all the way to year-round school. It goes through what magnet school is, privilege, whether it's fifth or eighth grade, senior privilege, sibling privilege, all of that. And then on page seven, we start looking at student assignment plan for priorities for magnet, non-magnet, and year-round. Please keep in mind that these are based on where there is space. So capacity is, the capacity chart is something that we've provided for you in here. On page eight, reassignment and transfer. A request for reassignment, like I've just gone through, because you asked that question at just the right time. The request for reassignment for anything from senior privilege, fifth, third grade, contract, space availability, that's what I mentioned, that if there are lottery spots or if you're requesting a less crowded school, then those were pretty easy to do, so automatic acceptance. And then the next one is going into a magnet or a non-magnet, basically where there are spots. And the last one on page nine, which is six, other substantial hardship meeting the hardship guidelines. Okay? So I want you to hang on to, put a little, put a little sticky note right there on hardship in your brain. We're going to come back to that. But I want to talk about the appeal process right here on page nine. So we've, we've got our timelines, all of those have been followed, everything's been done to the point of coming into, to the appeal hearing with you. So one thing in here says we can designate a limited number of schools that are basically closed to new enrollees because of overcrowdedness, and that's determined by the superintendent and communicated to the board. We do not have those. So we, we have capacities that are above maximum capacity, but we have not determined any to be closed for all reasons. We're just trying to manage the capacity. So on the next, page 10, I want to bring your attention, under request for transfer of students, section E, bullet E. The superintendent, his designee, shall grant transfer requests only if there is space available at the requested school and the applicant is chosen by the lottery, or if the applicant demonstrates substantial hardship meeting the hardship guidelines. The standard for showing a hardship may be different in certain circumstances. And this is where it talks about those staff. So staff within our schools, our employees have a lower standard of hardship because it, our staff don't have to show a substantial hardship, they just have to demonstrate a substantial inconvenience. Because we want them to be able to be at work on time and have their kid where they need to have their kid, so the standard is lower as determined by the board. But bringing your attention back to, my opportunity as a designee of the superintendent is only to approve based on the student assignment plan and not use any parameters outside of that. And the ones that'll be presented to you, I could not, right, I could not justify by the plan. And then through the bottom, you also, moving on to page 11 and 12, you have the employee benefit school designations, which you've seen in prior policy, but because our policy numbers have changed, we, and one of them, I think it's probably 4150, requires that it, that these schools be listed in the school, in the student assignment plan.
I apologize if I'm trying to understand the process previously and now. So anyone who has appealed, the superintendent and/or your committee, or two have made the decision to be denied.
Yes.
So we're taking those who were turned down. These are the numbers that appealed.
Yes.
Is there anyone else besides your committee and superintendent who rule on this? The reason I ask that is that my older neighbors, one kid's just got signed off for no reason at all, I'm just curious.
Right, I've known that to happen as well. In this process, in, in this process, it's really the Denise and Julie Show. Dr. Faust had, this is completely delegated to me as his designee, and so he has not viewed any of these.
Maybe that's one reason why.
Right, right, right.
Ms. Barnes, as you mentioned, the teachers and staff members, there is not, we don't have any in our packet that are in that, do we?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Generally, don't, because, I mean, the threshold is different, and we're able to really work through those.
Okay.
There's a lot of work that goes into the ones that, that make it here. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so let's talk about the guidelines for student reassignment on the grounds of hardship. So you've got your, your hardship information, and mine has a lot of writing on it, but it, it's the guidelines for reassignment. It's item five. Okay? So I will reiterate, all of these have been examined, and I think that's an appropriate word, examined for any type of hardship or otherwise process. And that's, and I want to clarify, as presented through the documentation. So any information that's been provided has been considered. The important part of hardship is in that first sentence here. Hardship, in order to be granted a school assignment on the basis of hardship, a parent must demonstrate a serious and continuing hardship which cannot reasonably be eliminated or reduced by means other than a reassignment. Meaning the reassignment mitigates their hardship. So that, that's, we take that very seriously. Otherwise, we would have unfair and inequitable opportunities at what some would consider to be choice schools. And so we have to make sure that we're really examining the true hardship and not just providing, you know, a, an automatic opportunity to be involved in a school that you perceive to be of choice. Even if a hardship is shown, again, this is, next sentence, very important, even if a hardship is shown, reassignment requests may be denied if a reassignment would interfere with the orderly and efficient administration of the New Hanover County School System in general, or the requested school in particular. And examples would be overcrowding in the requested school, or a lack of appropriate staff or services offered in a particular school. And that, we don't have that in general, unless it's a student with a specific disability that has a magnet service they need for a maximum service on their individualized education plan. But generally, those are able to be remedied, and the AP team is able to help the parent understand that, and that's not one of these either. So ground sufficient to show a hardship, we dig through these, and we feel like we could probably recite all this, but in this, this season, this is a tab that stays open on the laptop and then gets on the big screen in that, in our office, and we are digging through it for the letter of what you have approved in grounds for hardship. So our mission is to carry out what the board has approved, and only that. So care for an elderly or disabled relative, a specific work internship, student or volunteer opportunity for a student that they would not have if they didn't get the requested school. Next would be single parent leaving for work early, needing to drop off for childcare. We do consider the age of the child, and sometimes if age is not helpful enough, maybe even a particular disability of the child, or a special need in that. So we don't just, just look at grade level. The next would be family living situations where there is. The next would be family living situations where there is practically a sibling privilege, but it might not legally be a sibling privilege. We work through those. Another is serious documented mental or emotional problems. Has to be documented. It can't just be, well, you know, my child experiences anxiety with change. Please provide us any documentation you have on, on the care for that. Any safety issues, any academic issues, that's unique program or course. And we get pretty explicit with that as well. How unique is it? We call around, and, you know, some examples of one that we've come across this season has been, but at one school, it's a type of JROTC program. Not, it's not just that it is JROTC. It's a type of, so one's Navy, one's Army, that, or Air Force. That makes a difference, depending upon the plan of some students. Another is childcare centers, and you can't, you can't just choose a childcare center that only picks up at your preferred school. You have to have been involved in that childcare center for a while. That's, you have that stated in your plan as well. And then, again, elderly relative who might be providing childcare and cannot transport far across the district. The next list is very helpful, B, grounds not sufficient to show hardship. So we have to, to make sure that we don't approve any that are in these areas. Okay. So, back to your student assignment appeals, overview document, twenty-one, twenty-two. So you understand the student assignment process, I've kind of run through that. The appeal process, so we're on the bottom of page one. They're submitted, they, you know, appeal requests are submitted and may include some hardship information. And as, as I've said, I've gone ahead and approved any that have done that. Request for schools that reduce overcrowding, even if both are overcrowded, but one is less. I've approved... ...initiated bullying or, or required services. We have investigated all of those and pulled them out and approved them. The next, appeals are presented to the board. So open session, you have the orientation, that's what we're having now. Then we will move into closed session. And what will happen in there, we'll have a timekeeper. When families are brought in, introductions will go for a minute. Superintendent Designee, which would be me, presents the rationale for each of those in a minute. And then the parent or guardian presents their appeal in five minutes. And they have, this was determined prior last year, five minutes in order to establish equitable sharing of information. And then, you will, it, it does say, open session for review of the appeals and determinations.
Can we just pause for one second? We have power surge, which is not on the screen. Certainly, is it possible one second while we're playing with that? Good. We have power. Bit caused the entire system to shut down back there.
Lovely.
It's exciting.
Can we just reboot it, or is this something that's going to take some?
He is rebooting it now.
Okay.
And we should have it come back up shortly.
All right. Great.
We can just remind us what page you're on.